That's yours.
This.
That was yours.
Free for all.
Anarchy.
There's one meeting, it's a free for all.
It's already anarchy, straight out of the Anarchy.
I'd like to bring to order the August 27th meeting of the Tiverton Town Council. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Mallow?
Counselor Perry?
Present.
Counselor Shavitt?
Present.
Counselor Ryan?
Present.
Counselor Hilton?
Present.
Counselor DiMederos?
Present.
Counselor Edwards?
Present.
Counselor LaBeau?
Yep.
Consent agenda. Approval of regular session council meeting minutes, August 14, 2018. Counselor DiMederos and Edwards abstain, absent. No executive session held that evening. Approval of executive session meeting minutes, July 23, 2018. Approval of executive session meeting minutes, July 9, 2018. Approval of special town council meeting minutes, August 6, 2018. Counselor LaBeau abstains, absent. Approval of July 23, 2018 council meeting minutes as amended. Receipt of minutes from the filing boards and commissions, the planning board, and the historical preservation advisory board, two apiece. Correspondence received and filed, Susan Gill regarding letter thanking individuals for support during the AO tenure. Approval of tax assessor abatements and Treasurer Denise Charette, July budget and revenue report. Would anyone like to pull anything from the consent agenda?
Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
Motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Motion's been made, yes.
I just want to point out that number five includes, I believe, some requests to approve transfers that might require action.
All right, so I am going to make a motion.
Yeah, it does.
But if we consent to this consent agenda, then we approve the transfers. Everyone has to stand up, right? Okay. So it's okay.
Yep.
As long as everyone understands that. So I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Appointments and resignations, brought a canvass as resignation of Jean Vegg as ultimate. I'd like to entertain a motion to accept her resignation with regret and thank her for all her service.
Second.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Unfinished business. Police Chief Jones.
Madam President, is there any open forum?
I don't believe so. Is there?
No.
From here it didn't look it, but I might be able to tell you what happened since I sat down.
It wasn't long.
Open forum. William McLaughlin, Sanctuary Town. Mr. McLaughlin, we are going to discuss this on the agenda. Do you want to wait until it comes up and then I'll let you speak? Okay. Is that all right with everyone?
Thank you.
Unfinished business. Police Chief Jones, request approval of police for Reserve Office Corps, R O C, and letter of agreement for Reserve Officers. A, Police Chief Jones requests approval of appointment of Scott Ramsey as Reserve Officer. Welcome.
Good evening. So last council meeting, I had also spoken with the administrator about the research and implementation of a Reserve Officer Corps, also a community service officer program. So I know the administrator, I had supplied the administrator with the model contract and also the model policy for the Police Department, which I believe you have in front of you now. So I think just from a procedural perspective, what I'd like to do is fully implement the R O C or the Reserve Officer Corps program and also recommend to you that we appoint Mr. Ramsey as its first introductory.
Now, this is for the casino.
Correct, but the Reserve Officers-
Well, for other things also, any detail?
That's correct.
Okay.
The difference between the Reserve Officer Corps and the, obviously, the community service officers is the ability for the Reserve Officer to have law enforcement powers under general law, to carry a firearm, and essentially be indistinguishable from the active duty police officers.
Will they wear our uniform?
They will wear our uniform, but there'll be different trappings to designate them as a Reserve.
They'll say Reserve or whatever. Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes. Go ahead, Joe.
I'm just going to make a motion, but-
So Treasurer, would you like to speak first?
I just wanted to ask if the solicitor had reviewed the proposed contract for this?
I have. We had it also reviewed by Rhode Island into local risk management. Fortunately, we always have to worry about the liability, but we do have coverage. My only suggestion, and this is after a consultation with the administrator, instead of Reserve Officer Corps, could this be called Retired Officer Corps?
Of course.
Are they retired, though, all of these?
Yes.
From our police station?
And also from, I know we had spoken about, as long as they're retired law enforcement in Rhode Island, they'd be covered. So if we had a Tiverton resident who was a retired Portsmouth Police Officer, they could be considered.
Now, are they up to skills with firearms, firearms arms, and everything else you guys need?
Correct, so part of the policy would demand that they remain proficient. There's no separation of service, that they go through all the same criteria and qualifications that your full-time officers go through. And if there were any lapses, if they didn't, if they failed the training, or they didn't show up for the training, then that would be reason for dismissal.
Just one quick, I forgot. How many Reserve Officers are you, retired officers are you looking for?
I wouldn't want any more than a half dozen.
Okay. No? Yeah.
And that would be plenty.
That would be what?
That would be plenty, that's actually an extreme number.
Okay.
But to have three or four.
Yep.
With the understanding that if any Tiverton officers retired in the next, in years to come, that they would have preference to be able to do that correctly.
Okay, thanks.
Counselor Edwards?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion to approve the policy for Reserve Officer Corps, which we're now calling Retired Officer Corps, and letter of agreement for Reserve Officers.
Second.
Any further discussion? Motion's been made in second. All those in favor? Unanimous.
Madam President?
Go ahead.
I'd also like to make a motion to approve the appointment of Scott Ramsey as a Reserve Officer.
Second.
Motion's been made in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Very good job. Thank you. Denise Charette, Treasurer, approval of the final disposition of LED retrofit financing. Oh, I'm sorry. Wow, I'm just skipping over things. DPW Director Rogers, 2008 used truck warranty.
Good evening. At the August 14, it was approved to purchase the 2008 Snowfighter with the request that we look into warranties. The only available warranty is the 30-day warranty on major components for the engine, the tranny, and the rear axle issued by Cambridge Auto Wholesale. We also checked with Madigan to see if they would have any kind of extended warranty where the vehicle came from, and they said no. So the only available warranty is the 30-day issued by Cambridge Auto Wholesale. And they are issuing that more or less because we just got a couple of vehicles, and we're a town, and they're not required on a, in Massachusetts, there's a 30-day guaranteed warranty for automobiles, but not trucks.
Any questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
So is that at no cost to us? That's freely?
That's included in the cost of the vehicle. They did that for goodwill.
Okay.
Now, is our mechanic will go over this truck?
They have, and they will go over it again once it's delivered on Wednesday. They are, they'll go through it more thoroughly, but they've gone through it.
And found no problems that they're worried about?
Correct, no problems yet. We don't expect any problems.
But if they find something significant on Wednesday, then what happens?
Oh, no, and we have 30 days, so if we find something significant, they will repair it.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions? I'd like to entertain a motion.
Do we need a motion on this? I think it's just an update.
Do you want us to approve to buy the truck with this warranty?
Yes.
Okay.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd make a motion to approve the purchase of the 2008 Snowfighter with this conditional warranty.
Second.
Any further questions?
I thought we did that already. I mean, we already bought the truck.
I thought we did too.
Yeah.
Well, I know, but I think-
We did it again.
Well, I wasn't near last one.
You get two now.
What I understood, we set them before, so we want to make sure we have a warranty. Okay, so the motion should be that we approve the warranty and-
We approve the purchase of the truck with the warranty, yes.
I think that's what it should be.
Second.
Okay, so motion's been made in second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Denise Charette, Treasurer, approval of final disposition of LED retrofit financing and streetlight conversion expenses. Denise?
There she is.
Yes, she's there.
Hiding in the back.
Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? Okay, what you have in front of you, and if you recall, I think we talked about it a couple of times, we talked about it during budget season, the issues that we were facing with this LED conversion and the streetlight purchase. And I had told you that once we got the National Grid rebate, and we got closer to fiscal year end 18, we would see what we could do in terms of mitigating the shortfalls. So attached to my cover letter is an analysis of where we stood for the electric shortage. So at the very top of that page, we came in short, including the streetlight account, at $43,539. Primarily, the streetlights resulted from the budget that was in place for fiscal year 18, was assuming that we would start, the conversion would be all done, and everything would be up and running July 1. Well, that's not what happened. As a matter of fact, we're still converting some of the streetlights that Prism has had some problems with, but I think they're 95% complete. So that is really the issue with that shortfall. We are seeing some significant savings now, that we are 95% converted with the streetlight account. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed with that one. The other shortages in the electric accounts resulted primarily from when they did the LED conversion in each one of the buildings. There was a upfront cost involved with that, and that cost was spread over 48 to 60 months. And if you look in the middle part of this analysis, you'll see which building and how many months it was spread over was added to their regular electric bill, their regular monthly electric bill. And that was not budgeted for, because when this was all presented by, I forget who.
Matt.
Matt, right, but the other company.
Oh.
It was supposed to be a net zero. You know, the savings were going to offset these costs. That has not occurred. National Grid has said that they would look into it. We provided them with all kinds of data of our usage over the last, like, two, three years, and haven't really gotten any response from them. So if you think about it, it wasn't budgeted for 18, it really wasn't budgeted for 19. I included what the budget for each one of those accounts is for 19, and if you compare that to the actual, we're going to be short again next year. And it's primarily the result of these finance charges. So we had discussed taking what we had received from National Grid, the rebate. We had to pay the town back for the initial purchase of the streetlights. There was some police details that the town had to provide. That was all part of the agreement. So we, if you look at the lower part entitled Potential Solution, we got $68,000 from National Grid. I needed about $47,000 of that to pay us back. So that leaves me with $20,000. We have an estimated $55,000 LED financing, if I just look at the costs that we put into the buildings, that has been spread over the next four or five years and captured that, it's roughly $55,000. So after I went through the 18 numbers, I was recommending that the unexpended funds in some of these insurance accounts be used to pay off the purchase of the LED conversion, so that we can pay it off and not be short next year, basically. Because we're going to find ourselves in the same position next year with the electric accounts.
Madam President?
Your recommendation is, oh, it says page one.
On the first page, at the very bottom-
Yeah, the request to buy this transfer.
That was my potential solution.
So you need the total 56?
I need the total.
Or are you using the 20 left over from the National Grid rebate?
Well, we need 76,000.
Oh, you need, okay.
So I'm going to use the 20 that's left over, and then I needed another 56.
So all the total on this back row of speeches, your amount?
That, no, that's separate.
Okay.
Madam President, I have a question for the Treasurer.
Sure.
So you had mentioned that you'd reached out to National Grid, and they've thus far been unresponsive?
Well, they haven't been unresponsive. Jan and I have been kind of in an email chain, but they haven't been, you know, they're not all over it, like-
Okay. Well, I mean, hypothetically speaking, if we make these transfers and we offset this stuff, is there a chance that they come back and suddenly find another solution, and now we're going to make transfers going back the other way?
I don't think so. I mean, we purchased these products and paid for the labor for the installation, so I highly doubt it.
Okay.
They are, they took the total cost by building and spread it out between 48 to 60 months.
Yeah, the onbill financing, yep.
Right, and zero interest.
Yeah, that's important.
Right.
Okay. So the transfers would be what's on the bottom here?
Yeah, it would be here.
Okay.
Those would be the transfers. Okay. So the transfers that are attached here, we had also talked about these months ago, that I was going to try to find within the department, unexpended funds to cover the electric shortages in each department. So if you go back to the first page at the top, you'll see Town Hall, Fire Department, Police, DPW, Senior Center, and the streetlight accounts. We had shortages in every single one of them. Yep.
Okay, so the back page matches up to the top?
Yes.
And the bottom page matches up to the middle?
Yes.
Okay. Madam President?
Counselor Edwards?
I'm going to make a motion if there's going to be discussion. I'll hold off.
I just want to ask, so the, on this LED conversion, the electric savings that-
We are seeing some savings. And I did do an analysis of the kilowatt hours being used, and you do see a decrease in the cost, but it was not enough to offset the finance charges.
It was supposed to be. I know.
Yep.
I may be wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, the timing has a lot to do with it, as to when these projects were actually implemented and completed, which was a lot later than what originally. So therefore, the impact within the last fiscal year was a lot more than we had anticipated.
But that was the streetlights.
That was primarily the streetlights, but Jan is correct. The LED conversion took a little bit of time, and then they weren't going to do the last two fire stations, so they didn't start doing them until later in the year. So, you know.
That affected all?
That affected it as well.
Essentially, you're banking on 10 months of savings, and you wind up with two.
Yeah, pretty much.
So at the end of the day, we pay all these bills off, and in the next five to 10 years, that's where now real savings are going to come into effect. So we just need to pay them now. Again, let's not look at 10 minutes from now, let's look at five, 10 years from now. And now the electric bill in the town will be significantly lower than it was before this project was implemented. So we're looking at, you know, there's a couple errors here and there, but they will make up for themselves over the next five to 10 years, so.
Hopefully, 60 months would be the max.
Well, I mean, I'm just throwing a longer number out there.
Right.
So it's not like this money's wasted, like we've made a big error here, because we didn't.
No.
It was a great thing to do, it's energy savings, and there's a few little glitches, but it happens.
They always said they couldn't guarantee this, the amount of savings, but we thought it would be, I thought it would have been more.
Well, with National Grid's looking for a hike right now, too, so again, this is going to be, look like a shining star when that happens, too, because the bill's going to be, you know, you got to pay up, and that's just the way it goes.
Ready for me?
No. Oh, anybody else?
All right, Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to transfer $16,500 from account 21905268, $29,150 from account 21905269, $4240 from account 21905270, and $6,500 from account 21905271 to account, what is the number?
That's going to, I'm going to have to transfer, I'm actually going to take that money and send it to National Grid to pay off the financing.
So we're not going to transfer it to account, we're just going to approve the expenditure?
Yes.
All right, so I'd like to make a motion to approve the aforementioned accounts expended to offset the bill from National Grid.
And I already spoke to them, and there's no prepayment penalties or anything like that.
Okay.
I have a motion in the second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Madam President? I'd also like to make a motion to approve all of the transfers listed from, you want me to run through each one of them? No? All of the-
As listed.
All the transfers as listed in the amount of $43,539 and 20 cents to accounts, 10406912 Electric, 09808795 Streetlight Conversion, and 33806745 Streetlights expense.
Okay, second. The total on that 43, what?
Forty, it's $43,539 and 20 cents.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Thank you, Denise.
You're welcome. Did you have anything else with the other transfers that were included with the reports?
It's too late for that, we already approved them.
Well, those are just the ones we do every year for the cleanup.
Yeah, we approved them. That's probably the easiest year you ever saw that happen.
Well, it was only one page, last year it was six pages.
I know, I know. New business, Francis F. Provost, approval proclamation for town of Tiverton to be a sanctuary town. Welcome, Mr. Provost.
Thank you. I assume you all got the paperwork I left?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. I'll just say it again. The nature of my request is to make a statement that we, Tiverton, Rhode Island, will not assist the federal government in any of their actions relative to immigrants. The federal government, in my view, has overstated its bounds relative to the handling of the immigrant situation. These immigrant policies are against our core values as a nation. We are a country of immigrants, and as such, we should treat all immigrants fairly, and as we hope our interests are treated.
Could you just speak into the microphone a little bit? Because I don't know if the camera's catching this.
How's that?
Good.
Start again or go on?
You can go on.
Thanks. This, as citizens, is our right and duty. I've attached a cover letter, which I will also read, and I've also attached an ordinance for all Rhode Island cities and towns to do this. The cities and towns that have done it are the state, Providence, and Jamestown. And I guess you really want to know why I'm here. I watched this a long time. Unsatisfactory to my book, but who am I? And then they jumped up there and separated mothers from their kids. Here I am. You can't do that. That's against all moral judgment. Anybody who did that is against me, and I'm against them. And I'm done. Any questions?
Any questions from the council right now?
Madam President?
Yes.
About anything? About the whole thing?
Yeah, about the whole thing.
So you said Rhode Island approved this?
Yes.
And so did Jamestown?
Yes, and Providence.
Providence, yeah. Why do, why do you want Tiverton to do it if, isn't the state covering? That they, the state is covering-
Funny thing, I've heard that question before.
Well, it's, it sounds like the state is approving-
I think we need every voice.
Okay.
And we're a town, just like Jamestown, Providence, and if we back up the state, that's a good thing. We're also unique in the fact that we are Tiverton.
But you're not doing anything different in Tiverton than what Rhode Island has done, correct?
I'm not intelligent enough to speak to that. I don't know what-
I didn't hear you what?
I don't know what the town, Tiverton, excuse me, what the state did exactly.
Okay.
But I want to add our weight to it.
Okay.
And throughout the country, there are tons and tons of small cities and towns doing this, and they're adding to their state's weight. So I think we should add us to our state's weight.
Okay. All right, and I guess the other thing is, are you part of an organization, or are you doing it on your own?
Just a little Franny Provost all by himself.
Well, but Providence has done, has done this, so are you, were you doing, were you, took, did you take any part of the Providence?
I just said no.
True.
I didn't take, I woke up one morning, you know, somewhere before August 15.
Yeah.
And said, I want to come and see you folks.
Okay.
I did a little research, found out what was what, but I don't belong, I don't belong, that's not true, I belong to one organization, that's it.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Provost right now? Mr. McLaughlin, you did make a request, so just come to the microphone, introduce yourself.
Listen, ma'am, thank you. The case of you people lost your minds-
I just need your name and your address.
I'm William McLaughlin, 1640 Fish Road.
Thank you.
Now can I go?
Now you can go.
Right. You people must be losing your minds considering this proposal to be a sanctuary town. First off, we have a legal process for immigration into this country, and that's the way they should do it, because they learn what's expected of them to become citizens. Yet people like this gentleman here want to encourage people who have already shown they have no respect for our country or our laws by entering illegally, and we're going to encourage this, and you'd think they're going to follow the rest of our laws somehow after we rewarded them for breaking them in the first place. Not to mention the liability to taxpayers. You get 75 illegal immigrants moving to this town, and 20 of them are kids. We have to put their kids through school. That's $280,000 a burden on the taxpayers for people who are not going to contribute a dime in taxes, because they're probably going to rent when they live here. So I don't see how that benefits us and the town of Tiverton becoming a sanctuary city at all. Not to mention that declaring a sanctuary city is defying federal law, and it ties the chief's hands on things he can do to people who claim to be immigrants if they're arrested. Not to mention the U.S. District Attorney, they're after the, the United States government's got California in Supreme Court right now. And if they're found guilty of breaking federal immigration law by declaring a sanctuary state, we would be found in violation of federal law. I don't see how as a town we can defy federal law and feel good about it. I'm an American citizen, I'm a veteran. I believe in this country, and I believe in the laws that were passed, and we should stand by them, not go around them for people who are not going to benefit us.
I'd just like to make something clear. No one has lost their mind up here on this council. A private citizen asked me to put this on the agenda, and I put it on the agenda. He has the right to speak his mind, and we have the right to choose what we would like to do. But I very seldom will take anyone, any private citizen's request and say no to it, so I have not lost my mind.
Well, I didn't say no, he absolutely has the right to be heard, but to consider it is bordering on insanity.
But I just wanted to make it clear that by no means does this mean the council's considering it, it just means a private citizen has asked me to put it on the agenda, and I have not lost my mind, so thank you.
Let's see.
Anyone else?
Hello?
Hello, Jeffrey Belli, 2 Birch Street. I would just like to, just set the record straight. The gentleman did bring up some things, recent events that has happened, children being separated from their families. Those laws that separated their children from their families, I don't know, do you know who passed those laws and wrote them into law?
Are they laws?
Yes, they are. The law that was passed?
Address me, please, Jeff.
The law that was passed that separated those children, that the current administration has followed, was passed, and passed by Congress, and was signed by President William Jefferson Clinton. That's who, who signed that into law.
All right, Jeff, Jeff, this is a Democrat-Republican fight right now, okay?
No, I'm just, I'm just letting him know, if that, if that is, is one of his things. The other thing I would also like to point out, you know, with what the other gentleman said, okay? Making a declaration such as becoming a sanctuary town or a sanctuary city is in violation of federal law. And I don't know if anybody else here on the council has been following the recent news. I would like this council not to forget the girl who just died because of an illegal immigrant.
All right, thank you.
She was murdered by an illegal immigrant, and he is awaiting trial. Do not forget Molly Tibbetts.
Thank you, Jeff. So I think, what I am going to suggest, I think what I'm going to suggest, and then if anybody further wants to talk, I think Tony needs to review this and tell us how lawful this is. I also think that Chief Jones needs to review this and tell us the consequences of what this would bring onto Tiverton, and also tell us, like, how many people here in Tiverton right now it would affect, because I'm sure we do have some idea. And I think we should refer this to the police chief and the, and our attorney, and table it for further meeting. I'd like to entertain that motion.
Madam President? I'll make that motion.
I, I would like to make, well, you're gonna do one motion at a time?
Yeah, let's, let's do this motion in a second, and then have discussion, okay?
Okay.
All right. So, unless you want councilmen about to make this motion first.
I mean, I have no preference, but I would just echo that, or my motion would be the exact, the exact steps that you outlined, refer to the chief of police, refer to the solicitor, and table for a date not yet determined.
Okay. Do I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Well, I would like this whole thing put to bed right now, tonight. I want to make a motion to make a vote that we absolutely deny his request to have Tiverton a sanctuary town, and that's going to be my motion to absolutely not have Tiverton a sanctuary town.
Do I have a second to Randy's motion?
I don't think you can have two motions on the floor.
I can have two motions, and then I do this.
Just got to vote on the first one, and then if this motion fails, then drop down to Randy's motion.
But don't I have to have a second on that motion to even make it a motion? I think so.
I seconded John's motion.
No, John's motion is seconded.
Yeah.
So you want me to hold off on Randy's motion completely?
Correct, yes. Because we're in the discussion phase, phase online, right?
Right, okay. So I have a motion and a second on John's motion to table this for this evening, refer this to the solicitor and the police chief, to, really, to get the ramifications of this, and to see if legally this can be done.
Can we abbreviate that and call it hold for further study?
Sure. Hold for further study, refer, by making sure that we have referred it to the police chief and, and the attorney. Motion been made in second, any further discussion? All those, Joe?
Just, I, I want to stay, say some things right now before the vote. I have to agree that the, we, when we take office, we swear to uphold the US Constitution. And the US Constitution makes it perfectly clear that immigration is a federal responsibility. It is not a responsibility for a town. We swear to uphold the Constitution, and I think we also have, as part of our charter, that we will not interfere with the performance of the police chief's duties, and I consider this his duty to uphold, as he is also sworn to uphold the laws, the US Constitution. So I just want to make those two points, as well as if there is any further action on this, and it is approved, it would potentially put the Town of Tiverton in a litigation situation. And that's an expense to the town, and I would prefer not to even entertain any expense to the town.
And I agree with that, that's why I asked Tony to review it. If Tony comes back and says this is not something that we should do, that's why I felt it needs to be, be referred to. Tony, I'm not sure that he's looked over this completely, but that's, that's why I said that. So I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Tricia?
I, I am curious to the solicitor's opinion, because like Joan, you know, I'd prefer not to put the town in any position of liability. I, I'd also be curious to hear from the police chief whether or not, you know, this is a current issue in Tiverton. I, I don't know if it is or if it isn't. And, you know, in addition to the potential costs of litigation, there are also inherent costs in having a program like this. You then are required, once you become a sanctuary city or town, you're required to provide translation services, you're provided to provide, you know, English as a second language support, you're required to have written policies and procedures that are adopted. So, you know, it, it's not something that simply, you know, sounds nice on a piece of paper, and I'm, you know, many of us were horrified, completely horrified by the separation of very small children from their parents, but I, I'm not sure whether or not this is becoming a, and I truly don't know whether or not becoming a sanctuary city or sanctuary town is the solution to that problem, and whether or not that problem really can only be solved at the federal level.
Because of, because of all these issues that have been raised, I'd like the opportunity to review this with Chief Jones and give you a definitive on, on these, these, all of these issues.
All right, so I have a motion on the floor.
Madam President?
And I have a second, and any further discussion?
One more thing. Everybody keeps speaking of separating children from their families. Well, when there's a crime committed in Rhode Island, I don't care what the crime is, and you get thrown in jail, you know what?
That's cool.
You know what? The kids don't go with you. So why should they have their kids with them, and they're crossing the border doing everything illegal? So you rob a bank in this town, and you have kids, they're not coming to prison with you. I can guarantee you that, because I'm there.
You're talking to me now, right?
No, I'm talking to them.
Oh, then why are you talking to me?
I'm just looking at you. Because you're sitting there, that's my focus is over there.
You don't talk to me, or let me answer your question?
Uh, just hold up.
This is discussion among the council.
No, this is just discussion among the council.
Well, he was looking at me, I thought he wanted to ask.
And I'd like to make this brief.
All right, all right, I'm done. So now, I'm just letting you know.
No, I don't want to cut you off.
But when there's a crime committed, the kids don't go to prison with the parents. I can guarantee you that, so.
All right, so.
You want me to talk to you again?
Please, he's talking to me.
Okay. You're talking to me?
Yeah, well.
We're, we're all looking this direction, because we're all facing this direction.
Okay, so, I have a motion on the floor and second. All those in favor? Against, 5-2. Motion passes. Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Will I hear the summary of the chief and the lawyer? Will I be in the time?
It will be put on, in a gender item when they're prepared.
And you got a guest minute, how long?
Probably in September, maybe the last week in Sept, the last meeting in September. We're gonna give them a month.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I think we said indefinitely.
Well, we'll talk about more.
Jan, January 1st.
Thanks.
You're welcome. I'd like to entertain a motion to bring G7 forward. Mr. Pelletier has come to speak to us, and he had other meetings before him, that's why I put him at the end.
So moved.
Do I have a second? Motion been made in second, all those in favor? Brett Pelletier, update on progress of Stone Bridge Above Men Project.
Hey Brett. Mike. How are you? Good, how are you? I'm very well, thank you.
Just state your name and address, even though.
My name is Brett Nicholas Pelletier, I live at 34 Evans Avenue, just down the street.
We just wanted a, a lot of councils just wanted to know what was going on with this project up to this point.
Sure. We're on schedule, we're on, well, the schedule, we're on schedule. The schedule was, was much longer than was necessary to complete the project in all estimations, so we're, we're on schedule, we're on budget. Aside from some change orders and some minor hiccups in coordination with the, with the Grinnell's Beach Committee, everything's moving on perfectly, adequately, I suppose.
And when do you think the completion date will be, approximate?
I don't know yet. It depends on a number of things. There's some long lead items that have been causing some problems for us, some concrete stonework that takes quite a long time to make, and, where is Rick?
It's over there.
I mean, we've talked to the engineers about, we'd like to get it done by the end of September, but I'm not sure if that's possible. They have until the end of the year.
If you'd like to come up, that's, that's fine.
So they have until the end of the year per the contract, but obviously they don't want to be working in December and November, so we're, the last time we met, I think, Jan, we tried to get a hard date out of them, and they kind of wiggled a little bit and said, you know, we'd like to say we get it to, get it by the end of September, but, you know, not sure.
Anything you'd like to add?
To echo what Brett said, they expect the gravel, the compaction, the paving, they expect that, and the grading in between that to be done, the drainage, they expect the lighting pedestals to be in, the lights themselves, maybe, maybe not, but that's all above the ground. All the fine tuning and all the electric hookups and wiring, maybe not. The, but they expect the pedestal to be in also, and the loam and seed by the end of September, as Brett said, but some of the cleanup, that kind of thing may not be done by the end of September.
The structure, the major structural bits are done. I mean, the sheet piles in, the caps in, the north wall is substantially completed, with the exception of the finishing caps. The south wall is substantial, is, is complete, the surface is substantially complete, they, I mean, I got a backfill report, so I imagine they've backfilled the drainage and all that, and it's really thrown asphalt and a top coat on, the railing on north and south sides, the lighting hand, the lighting holes and fixtures, and then the paving of the parking lot, and all the bollard installation and little things. And we've coordinated with Tricia's committee to get the south side curbing done this week so we can pave the rest of the parking lot. For the most part, it's
Good.
Got very little substantive work to do.
Madam President?
Come on in.
Just out of curiosity, Mr. Pelletier, how are we doing money-wise? Because I know if we go over the amount of money we receive from the federal government and through the state, the town holds the bag, and I just want to make sure that we don't have that happen.
Yeah, Rockio knows, we've stressed that a number of times, effectively, that if they go over budget, they're not going to get paid. So they, not so much that, but that, that we, we don't have deep pockets to, to reach into, so they're very sensitive to that. We're tracking, I think, 80% completion on the budget side of $1,008, but that's exclusive of any change orders, and we've got a change order for the parking lot, and some reconciliation on final quantities at the end of the project that we, Jan, 50,000, maybe?
57,000.
57,000, we're thinking. So we're well within our contingency.
Would it be possible to get a, get the actual numbers on a, on a report at some point? I mean, I know we're kind of close to the end, but.
What actual numbers?
Like, as far as the budget expenditures, all that stuff?
Yeah, so, so the most recent report came in a couple, maybe a week ago or so, and so we're at 81.7% of budget, of 1.8 million, which was the original contract price, and then the 57,000 is what Bill Anderson estimated our, our reconciliation on the quantities would be, and then, is it 60,000 or 70,000 on the parking lot, Jan? I can't remember. I think we've got that, I don't know if we've signed anything yet with them, but.
We, we don't have to dive into it now, I mean, if.
Jan's got all the.
Yeah, if, maybe the administrator could just send it out to the council, that'd be great.
As far as I know, everything is within the budget, as well as the estimates that Bill Anderson had developed for the different remaining elements so far. The other thing is, I've spoken with DOT Tom Queenen, who's sort of the top overseer of this, about the change orders that still need to be processed, or they actually are within the project and eligible for reimbursement. That looks like it's going well. Tom is going to do everything he can to, to help us with that, so.
And if, I mean, if, on the back of a envelope, so to speak, if you take the $1,008 based contract price, add 70,000 for the parking lot, add 60,000 for quantity adjustments, even if you add a 15 or 20% contingency on top of that, we're still under the 2-3 mil, 2-3 cap, so. And we've held back purchasing the lighting fixtures themselves, which was $180,000, give or take, in case we ran into problems. And so far, we haven't, so.
Any other?
We've run into issues, but nothing substantial.
Any other questions from the council?
Madam President?
Yes.
With the lighting, the stanchions will be there, just the poles won't be, am I correct? Like you just said, you have a whole.
Well, we have that decision to make. We, our, our initial plan was, we'd put all the infrastructure in place, and then, at the end of the project, we'd drag our feet as long as we could to say, do we have enough money? As long as we didn't have, because there were some issues we didn't know, because we didn't have enough borings on the west and the northwest side, if we were to run into any issues with driving the sheet piles that we had to, to work around, we didn't. There were a couple of other areas where we were concerned that we would run into additional costs, we didn't. So I theoretically, we'll wait until we, the last minute, but then we'll try to squeeze in the fixtures as well, and the, and the wiring.
So the 180 will be the bases and the fixtures?
I don't remember how exactly the, the, that was an add alternate, and I want to say that 180 included the bases, the fixtures, the wiring, and the podium, because we had to, they, VHB kind of made that change independently, and we needed the podium, whether we had the lights in, in or not, because it was going to feed the, the beach project as well. So I think we, Bill had to carve that out, so it's probably closer to 150,000 for all of the lighting infrastructure. And also, we had the option, the potential option to source it locally with some residents who were in the business that could potentially help us out, if, if worst came to worst.
Any other questions for the council?
Just one, one comment. We did have some feedback in one of our meetings about the lighting, so that it was downward instead of skyward, and, and maybe not so much lighting.
Mm-hmm.
So just wanted to pass that along.
The light, the lights will be, they're LED downlighting that, they're controllable and dimmable, and so there are two, there's a timer control, and then there's a manual override, so we can set it to light where we want. And we had a photometric plan done when we had the whole site designed, and the light spill was very minimal, because they are concentrated heads.
Very good. I'm sure that the, the residents who came forward would be, will be very happy.
Yeah, I, I mean, early on in the process, we had a resident who, who called me, and it was already past the, we had already gone to bid on the packet, but we were trying to get as close to dark sky compliant as we could, so.
Excellent, excellent, thank you.
We're doing the best we can on that.
Any other questions? Brett, thank you, and thank you very much for taking over this, this project and helping Jan in the absence of a DPW director, and, and quite frankly, I'm, I'm sure you've helped, Mr. Rogers, immensely.
Oh, yeah, well, this is, I've done very little, between Jan, Rick, the treasurer, no, the treasurer and, and everybody else that's been working on this project, we've, treasurer and everybody else that's been working on this project. We've, it's all been, and our onsite staff is good as well. Fish engineering has been very helpful.
Well, I can still give you my appreciation, and thank you very much.
That's fine. And feel free to call or email anytime.
I will. Thank you, Brett. Chief Jones, permission to advertise for eligibility list of part-time, full-time dispatches?
Good evening, Jen.
Good evening.
So the current list of dispatch staff that we have, which we try and keep a list at least good for a year, is exhausted. We hired one casual, actually, two casual CCOs, one resigned, and one is currently working. I also want to have a list just in the case we have a potential for any other full-time employees, so they can be a smoother transition. We have a young woman who has taken the place of dispatcher, recently retired. She's going to take over his shift, which is perfect for us, so it'll limit the overtime, but as of right now, I have no qualified applicants. So I'd just like permission to advertise to create a list.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to grant Chief Jones permission to advertise for eligibility list of part-time slash full-time dispatchers.
Second. Any further discussion? Motion been made in second. All those in favor, unanimous. Stay right where you are. Chief Jones, permission to advertise for part-time animal control officer?
So what I would like to do going forward, as you know, your animal control officer works Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. He's a unionized employee. His hours are set by the contract. I would like to, under the same kind of umbrella of having a casual CCO, and I've spoken to the ASME union president about this, which they have no problem with, as long as we stay under the 19-hour cap, this person would be a non-permanent, non-union employee. They would receive no benefits other than working and the salary that they would receive. And as far as a benefit to the town, obviously, especially with coming into the season with everyone going back to school and everyone utilizing our town fields, we had a lot of complaints on the weekend for animal services. We also have the new shelter, which is located at West Place. They're doing a fantastic job, but they want to keep that collaboration between the police department going. Every time we have an animal complaint on off-hours on the weekend, a police officer is committed to taking care of that. So what I'm trying to do in connection with the resources that we're allocating throughout the town with the opening of the casino, by having a part-time person that only works the weekend eight hours a day, that'll just take one added responsibility off the police.
Madam President?
Yes.
Motion to grant Chief Jones permission to advertise for part-time animal control officer.
Any further discussion?
Madam President?
Yes, Council of both?
Go ahead.
I'm just going to go down though.
The animal control officer now, a full-timer, is he a armed person?
No, he's not.
He's not armed anymore?
He is not.
There used to be, correct?
That is correct.
So he's no more?
That is correct.
Then I'm all set.
I've heard stories about that.
I'm just concerned that we'd have a part-time guy who gunslinging and shooting up pet raccoons and stuff.
The last animal control, the last, the animal control officer has access to a tranquilizer gun, but no, not carrying of any firearms.
And in the case, there's a rabbit animal, I've had this happen in my neighborhood, they call the police officers.
And we dispatch a police with them, correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Okay, so this person is only going to be on Saturday and Sundays?
That is correct.
But you mentioned that there's off-duty and on days, days off, sorry.
Correct.
So is that when a regular policeman takes over for, or you just...
Correct. So like after hours right now, if there was a call for an animal, a police officer would respond?
Okay, all right. So I just wanted to make sure that he could, he can't go on, the person who's on the weekend can't go and take off some of the off, the days off.
That is correct.
But that's okay, because it's covered?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Council Hilton, so Chief Jones, do you have an estimated budget for this, or a place in the budget, your budget for this?
What I plan on doing right now, if we call the animal control officer out off-duty, it's overtime.
Okay.
So with my current staffing and the current budget that I have allocated, yes. Also, what I can do, given that it's an at-will employee, like during the summertime, I can't foresee having someone come in on a January weekend that it's six inches of snow on the ground, so that person won't be called in. So during certain parts of the year, definitely now getting into the use of the fields for the athletics and kids going back to school, and possibly in the spring and the summertime.
Any other questions or discussion? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor, unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council of both, discussion and possible vote for Casino Avenue Ordinance.
So I've been speaking to Tony about getting these ordinances up and running before election time comes around, and I talked to Tony before we came in today, and it needs a little more work before we can actually discuss what's going on, unless you want to bring up to date where we're at with the council right now, unless you want to wait until...
Want to just table it until...
I would. This is something I really need to work with the town administrator on, and I got him a skeleton ordinance, a little bit late, but he pointed out that I missed a couple of vertebrae, maybe a femur, and he's raised good issues, and we're working on it. I think that Jan has good perspective, and I want to continue on with him so he can get something intelligent out here.
All right, so I'll check with you in the first September meeting to see if it's finished.
Can we get what you got so far? Any chance of it? Or you want to wait till it's finished?
We should wait. The town is...
That's why he makes the big bucks. We'll go with that.
Council Hilton?
We're just, we're moving on, all right? No motion needed?
No motion needed, correct? Okay. The next one is mine. Council President DiMaderis requests update on casino opening and preparation. As you all know, the casino's opening September 1st. I just noticed the sign there, and I'm not sure if any, if that just went up, but it's a really nice sign. I noticed it today. And I just need an update on whether we are prepared with the police and the fire, and is there any potential problems?
Okay. I thought I might start with the fact that the completion of the roundabout was one condition before they can actually open, and we had some concerns that it was taking a lot of time to actually get that completion. We now, I believe, have the roundabout striped and being cleaned up, or maybe that's all done right now.
It looked really good.
So they actually have achieved substantial completion, which is really what's needed to allow the opening to continue. Tomorrow at 10 o'clock is the ribbon cutting at the roundabout. On Thursday, we'll have the initial soft opening.
At 10 o'clock.
At 10 o'clock, and the soft opening continues for two days, and then on Saturday is the public opening. In terms of being ready, the police department in particular is fully ready to supply the details that are needed. We've had quite a few complications with the fire department, just because there were some issues that were not sufficiently anticipated, that we needed to work on together with both Labor Council and the town solicitor. So we're in the process of that. For the time being, we have essentially a fallback option in place, which is very limited to one detail for any shift, and that detail to be filled by town firefighters. In the meantime, we are working on a solution that can overcome some of the legal issues, so that maybe, as needed, we can bring on additional people, which I expect will be needed, but we'll have further discussion about that.
Now, he brought up the ribbon cutting tomorrow at 10. I was originally going to go to this when it was last week. I do have a doctor's appointment. I know John will definitely make the Thursday ribbon cutting. Are you able to make Wednesday?
I was hoping you weren't going to ask me that.
Well, because they wanted some kind of speech about the roundabout, which I wasn't quite sure what I say about a roundabout.
I'm going to give you, I'm going to give you a preview of my speech, if I were to give one.
Well, I think we should thank everyone concerned.
It's circular.
No, I think we should thank everyone concerned for getting the completion, but I also think we should thank all the residents in that area for putting up with what they put up with in the last couple of months, because, and as one resident who saw it and lived through it, it was a hardship. But I don't know how everyone feels, but it is getting much, much better, as far as I'm concerned. And I go there all different times of the day, but I do want to, I realize what a hardship this was on everybody concerned, and thank you everyone for their patience, and I think we probably need to express that tomorrow, whoever's going to say that speech, and I don't mean to...
Unfortunately, unfortunately, it will not be me at work complex.
I can't. I know Joe can, but he's not thrilled about saying the speech, but I just gave the speech for you.
Thank you. And by the way, tell them it's, tell them it's round, and you go all around it.
Yeah, I got something that I'm going to try. Is it at 10 tomorrow or 11?
It's at 10. It's at 10.
What about the ribbon cutting on Thursday? What time is that? 10 also?
Yeah.
And John's prepared to make the speech for that.
I'll be prepared for that one.
But I think, I think what we need to really stress is that this was, we stressed with Twin Rivers End Estate, that we, and Joan was on that council, that this roundabout had to be in place when this happened. And even though maybe there is some tweaking, it is there, and I think the people feel that the traffic is doing better there, and I personally do. I'm just one resident that goes by there every day. So are you going to be there?
I will be there. I just want to add one thing about the inspections and items remaining. For quite some time now, we were a little concerned that, again, they were behind on schedule, it looked like. They have stepped up. I will really want to give credit to our inspectors, because they've been there all the time. They've been very accommodating to the contractors. And I just had an update from the interim building inspector that he does expect to issue another temporary certificate of occupancy, which essentially allows them to open. The final certificate cannot be issued until the fire alarm test is done, which has to be done after the official public opening. There are several outstanding items that they want to be very careful with they actually get done, so there's a lot of pressure on the contractor right now to finish that tomorrow and the day after. But the building inspector was optimistic that it would all happen in time.
I would also like to say that in light, at the time where all this was going on, we didn't have a DPW director, we didn't have a building official. I think everyone has stepped up to the plate, and I want to thank everyone, and that's including the fire chief, the police chief, the building inspector. I understand that the fire marshal has played a significant role in this, and I've been here in town where he is constantly in Jan's office with updates. And I want to thank everyone involved, because I know that this was a difficult time in light of the staffing that we had, and everyone stepped up and did a really great job. And then I think the rest of the council agrees with me.
I do.
Anything else? Any questions?
I will be there on Thursday as well.
You will? Okay. All right, good.
You've got my back if I start to fall for you.
Yes.
And Jan, you'll be there, but Joe, are you going to say something?
Actually, I will not be there on Thursday.
No, but you'll be there on Wednesday.
On Wednesday, yeah.
So one of you will be there.
Wednesday or Tuesday?
You said tomorrow, now you're texting Wednesday.
I'm sorry, guys, I'm really screwed up. It's tomorrow's Tuesday. It was Wednesday originally, yes.
Just so you know, I'll be there Saturday.
Well, if you would like to say a speech, Randy, go right ahead.
My speech will be to the deal of hitting.
I apologize. This was supposed to be on a Wednesday, and it's still in my head as Wednesday.
So it's tomorrow.
So it's tomorrow at 10. And Joe, will you say something?
I'll do my best.
Thank you. And Jan will back you up if you need him.
And I've asked for shade.
Okay. Well, they have a whole bunch of flowers all set up. I know.
Just don't get run over.
So I think that's where you'll be, and there's no shade.
Look both ways.
All right, so that's all. I just wanted to make sure that everyone, and especially the residents, had an update on what was going on, and it is going smoothly. All right. Town Administrator, request approval to advertise RFP for energy service.
Thank you. A little while ago, I mentioned that there are opportunities to purchase additional renewable energy at discount prices, and you were supportive in principle. Actually, these are extra public copies.
I guess so.
But we, you directed me to make sure we do this in a competitive manner, so I received from the solicitor's office a draft RFQ/RFP that you have in front of you. My apologies for not getting that to you sooner. It still needs more work, but it gives an idea of how thorough this request will be and what proponents will need to respond to on different items. I would like to advertise that as soon as possible, and hopefully get back to you in September with a initial outcome of the request for proposals process.
And Tony, you'll be reviewing this. Have you looked at the...
He drafted this.
Actually, we drafted it, yes.
And you'll be...
Yes.
Keeping track of what needs to be tweaked on, because Jan said it's not complete?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the town administrator advertising the RFP for energy services pending his tweaks and approval of those tweaks by the solicitor.
Motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Bids and requests for proposal, Tricia Hilton, Farnell Beach Committee award of bids for recycling station at Farnell Beach. Thank you.
That would be this piece, the Max R., right?
The Max R. one. We went out to bid for recycling stations to the beach. Bids closed on Friday at 2:00. There was only one bidder, Max R., so I'm requesting that the council award the bid for four HDPE recycling stations to Max R. in the amount of $11,078.20, because trash bins are really, really expensive.
Is that like, are these like the solar ones that compact?
No, they're, they're, they're not the solar ones that compact. They're, they're, they're big. They're three 45-gallon units ganged together and made of HDPE, that high-density plastic stuff, with stainless hardware, so it won't rust at the beach, and veil tops and seagull flaps and everything else.
Any idea what they weigh?
Too much for you to pick up.
I just see them walking away.
No, 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 no. These are, these are big. They're like... What would be able to find them? No, they're big. They're like, you know...
They're heavy?
They're heavy, heavy. They're like 60 inches long by 40 inches high by, you know, 20 inches. Like, these things are big, and they're heavy, and I want to guess they're several hundred pounds apiece.
Okay, is it a lot of money on recycling?
And this is in the budget? It's all set? Yeah. Okay. We knew that we were going to have to spend a lot of money to have trash things, and frankly, we considered the, we considered the solar ones, and the thing that really scared us away the most was the fish in there. And if you start putting fish guts, and you start putting fish guts in a solar trash compactor, the stench will kill you. And we just decided at the end of the day that that was probably going to smell too bad, and these are, you know, if somebody does that, they can be emptied out, and they can be hosed out with a hose, and it hopefully won't smell too bad.
Madam President?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the award of $11,078.20 for recycling stations to Max R.
Second.
I have a motion in second. Question?
Just a question. We probably should make plans to do the same thing at Fogland?
Yeah.
At some point.
At some point. And when we have the trash bins out here, the green and blue ones, they came out of some type of fund.
It was a grant, wasn't it?
I think recycling proceeds.
It was, it was a recycle, it went into the recycling committee, but it was a grant or some funds that we received for recycling. Am I right? It was something like that. Vaguely, although we didn't, we didn't consider using those, which we still, apparently the town still can get some of those. We didn't consider them because they're metal, and, you know, in the salt environment down there, HDPE was the way to go so that, you know, it wouldn't rust. But I think somebody at the DPW might know.
It might have been, it might have been Resource Recovery.
Right, that's what it was.
Refund from Resource Recovery, which I think went away, right?
But I think we still have some money in that account. I don't think we spent that entire account, but we do, we spent it. No, we still have money.
No, we still got some.
So it might be a good consideration to think of Fogland as well.
Yeah, and use that money.
To be consistent between the beaches.
Madam President?
Yes.
One more pointed discussion, just on the agenda for future bids and requests when these come up. I would prefer, say, Councilor Hilton as opposed to Tricia Hilton.
All right. Talk to Nancy.
Just, we want to reflect her official title, Ms. Come on.
Well, I, that's actually, I don't believe that that was Madam Clerk's fault. I think I was in a mad hurry. I filled out the forms, and I sort of put it under my role as chair of the committee.
Fine, fine, fine.
But I'll, I'll write both next time.
We know who she is. All right, so I have a motion in second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, unanimous. Thank you. Town Administrator announces, announcements? Any council announcements? I know someone did.
I do. Madam President, I was approached by a constituent this week, and he wanted to make sure that I gave kudos to both the fire department and the police department. Apparently, they were, there was an issue that happened. He needed an ambulance to come, and they took incredibly good care of him, and so he wanted to make sure that, you know, I made that announcement publicly and thanked them for, for their work and how they were able to, to take care of him. So, thank you.
Thank you. Council Hilton? I have two. One is just a question, because it's almost September now.
One is just a question because it's almost September now and I'm getting a little worried that our, however we're going to sort out outdoor seating isn't going to be ready for November. And I really don't want to ask the businesses to have to come back a second time. So I'm just wondering if we're making any progress on that.
Would you like to, Yan was going to put it on the agenda for this week, but it needed, it still needed a little work. So I think our plan was to put it on the September 1st and then we have to do the public.
We need a little more work by the solicitor in consultation with me. There was an amended version of the ordinance. Since that amendment, there hasn't been really any further amendments. And I think out of the public meetings or public hearings, there were some issues that perhaps we can accommodate a little bit better by looking at the language, so.
Yeah, I'm supplying some additional research to Yan. He'll get that at the end of this week.
It was going to be on this agenda, but after discussion, we decided that we would wait one more. I didn't think that would be any big deal.
If I have one more one after you.
And then my second one, and I think everybody saw this, which has been put together by Open Space.
Which is awesome.
Which is just a fabulous piece of work of all of the Open Space recreation areas in town with all the maps of all the hiking trails and where are the places you can take your dogs and where you can, where there's hunting and all. And it's just really, really nice. So if you haven't picked one up, you should and also.
Hopefully we'll have it outside.
Kudos to the Open Space Commission for such a nice piece of work.
Madam President?
Yes.
I would just want to echo that, but also there are a lot of different organizations. It wasn't just Open Space, although they took the lead, but there are a lot of, and it is, I just think it's, I know they've been talking about it for a long time and I just think it's great. And where will people be able to get this?
Well, I'm hoping because we have the card catalog.
We have them distributed. They're on the tax tables, they're at the senior center. They're out here and in the public area, they're on the clerk's counter and we will get some up to the library.
All right. I think just, I think it's great because I think Tiverton is so beautiful and it's like finally we're showing it.
We also have that information thing outside of town hall. Maybe we could put a couple in there because I know that there's a lot of walkers and hikers outside.
Look at it, look at it. But we have been getting them around as well. There were 500 of them, so copies.
They're going to go fast.
Yeah. We're going to keep replenishing them.
When that's just done. Okay.
Everyone down there?
Yep.
All right, so one other item of recognition. I had the privilege to go to the landfill on Saturday and I call it a privilege because I enjoy it. But I noticed that they, they opened, they opened the new access road and I think we should recognize Kim Litchfield for all the hard work that he did. I know he was instrumental in putting that together and it looks fantastic, despite the fact that it's at a landfill. So I, you know, I think that kudos goes out to Kim and the rest of the DPW crew who were involved in putting that together because quite frankly, the road looks better than the old road, which we're going to fill with trash, so.
Anyone else? All right, town solicitor? Town clerk?
Just to let you know that I have been working with two of the attorneys from Attorney DeSisto's office and we are making great headway on this code and I am pushing them a little to do more of the zoning that we said would not be in this, but they're kind of incorporating where we can. And really, we're doing a great job and the outdoor ordinance was also mentioned today. So I just want you to know it really is coming along better than I've seen it.
Tony has a new associate, associate that's really helping.
Yes, he does.
So just so everyone knows, there is a new associate over at Tony's office that's working. This might be your announcement?
No, but they tell me that Nancy reminds them of Coach Belichick.
I need to get the most we can on this. This is our one shot.
Very young lawyers.
Very enthusiastic.
Very enthusiastic. We may end up liking them better than Tony and that's okay.
There's going to be three of them now?
Yes, Tony and two.
Yeah, so it's going to be three of them. Do we cheat them out? Is that what it's going to be called?
Actually, there's two associates and I've also hired someone else too and we're starting them off down here in Tiverton for the experience. But you're actually not Tony, your peers worse tonight.
Good place to put them.
If they survive Tiverton, they'll survive anywhere. All right, anyone else? All right, I'm glad one.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to go into.
Wait a minute, wow.
Can I? Oh, I thought that's when I did it.
No, it would be in the open forum. It's when you make the announcement.
Oh, I was late.
I'm going to allow this just this once.
Okay, I have, I have three. Kelly Levesque, Crandall Road.
Come on.
All right, three, quick. Pardon Gray Day reminder is the 15th of September.